We're returning to our session. I have one resolution coming out of the executive session. Bo Green, sorry. Bo Green? Thank you. We have one resolution coming out of the executive session. I'll be recording. Be resolved that the Board of Education hereby upholds the determination of the Superintendent of Schools, L.J. Powell, dated September 25th, 2017, regarding a student, L9517, which adopted the Section 314 Education Law Findings and Recommendations of Designated Hearing Officer Daniel Berndstein dated September 25th, 2017. Be it also resolved that the district clerk shall notify the parents of the board's determination. I'll entertain a motion. Okay. Any questions? All those in favor, designate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstention. And a motion here. And that gives us two, uh, first opportunity for public participation. If you would like to address the board, please approach the podium, speak directly into microphone, identify yourself. It's not a conversation. You're limited to two minutes, and a board clerk, Mr. Carter, will let you know when you're approaching that two minutes.
Hi, Tom. My name is Nicole Porello. I have four children in this district ranging from grade 12 down to sixth grade, and I'm actually here to discuss briefly some of the inequalities and inconsistency regarding suspension policy. Some students are shown leniency while others are made an example of for identical infractions. Speaking today regarding the necessary overview of this district policy, especially regarding students ages K through six. The longer students are suspended from school, the more difficult it becomes for them to successfully transfer back into their regular school day. This leads to more disciplinary infraction suspension and ultimate failure. And I think it's time for the district to provide fair and equal suspensions for all students while keeping the age and level of severity into consideration. It's also time for the district to provide appropriate equivalent instruction while these students are on suspension. Currently at the middle school level, students receive eight hours of time per week at J. Locks and Bell. Parents of suspended students are required to call the main office by 9:00 a.m. in order to ensure there's a teacher who's available to stay that day. For instance, after-school support for suspended students is not available tomorrow due to lack of coverage. Hence, suspended students will receive no instruction or support, nor is there any offer for available makeup time. In these frequent instances of cancellation, building administration needs to take responsibility and uphold district policy to support and uphold students who are suspended, and they need to be held accountable to support those students academically. I just think it's time for the inconsistency to end, issue to be rectified, and for adequate and active instruction for suspended students to be given in order that they are onto the path to success instead of as they are now.
Is there anyone else who'd like to address the board at this time? All right, hearing now more, so I will introduce Mrs. Tygadoff with District Captain.
Good evening. So for this month's district captainings, I was able to visit my alma mater, Chambers Elementary School, where I was tasked with taking a look at a new structure in one of the classrooms where there's multi-age grouping in the English and language classroom. This was devised by Dr. Felicello and Principal Petrie over the summer when they were setting up the school.
The ELL population has almost more than doubled in the past five years. You're now at about seventeen and a half percent. So what we decided to do was start to think outside the box. So instead of just grouping them by age, saying, okay, well, this student's going to second grade, so they'll be in a typical second-grade classroom, we started to really look at the individual levels of our students and how they were performing in both ELLA and math, and then we grouped them based on that in order to provide them as individualized an opportunity as we could.
My name is Emily Clausy. I teach kindergarten and first grade combined at Chambers Elementary School. The instruction of the classroom is taught in English, but if there's any sort of clarifications that need to be given or any more descriptive instructions, they're given in Spanish to the students that need it. The fact that we have a bunch of different levels in here is really great. The whole classroom is taught with small groups. Even though some of the students are in kindergarten and some of them are in first grade, we base the groups based on their skill level. So this is a higher-level thinking activity, and what they start first is rolling their big dice. What number did you get?
Three.
Okay. And then they roll their little dice.
Nine.
What'd you get? And then you have to put together and add together your three plus your one is?
Three plus one equals four.
Perfect. And then they color in their four. Whereas the group that's over there is my beginner levels, and they are just rolling one dice and counting the dots that they get on that dice for their one to be part of.
It is amazing. I mean, you couldn't ask for a better way to set up the program. Because of the fact that we both speak Spanish, we can both speak to parents, the children, we can both modify the instructions. And it's wonderful. It's great.
I'd like to view it as a ladder, so a student can't climb the higher steps of the ladder until they have the bottom part there.
We love it here at Chambers. Our diversity makes Chambers the real community that it is.
And we want to leave a couple of minutes towards September 15th. Are there any amendments or corrections to make? Okay, hearing now, I'll hear from the motion department.
Same old.
Any discussion? All those in favor, designate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention.
I have a statement.
Yes. Thank you. Okay. I turn the floor over to Superintendent for Superintendent's report.
Thank you, sure. First to make our superintendent's report is Mr. Flapper, our honor's representative, coach of our Second Century Project, and his other buildings and grounds issues that he might want to discuss.
Little departure tonight. We're actually going to talk about maintenance and custodial summary first. We had a really busy summer, as you can imagine, and we do work in every school. We prioritize what we need to do, we make sure we get it done, and then things happen along the way that we need to address. For some reason this year, a lot of trees decided that it was time to go horizontal. So we had a couple of trees, as you'll see through this. Other replacements were electrical, plumbing, plumbing work. We are still working on our lead remediation, and we're putting in bottle filling stations in all our schools. We're about maybe forty percent done with that. The kids loving, teachers loving, bottles everywhere. Pretty much same work throughout Bailey. They've got a new food service line. We bought all the materials for the modular, both at Miller and at Bailey, but because of other work that we had to accomplish, we got the windows and siding on at Bailey but did not accomplish it over at Miller, so we'll be doing that next time. But at Miller, we did get all-new stage lighting, and we put LED lighting in the auditorium and in the gym. And so we're trying to have a program where we're doing certain areas in every school of high energy use. Usually the high sodium lights in gyms and areas like auditoriums use the most energy, so we're systematically going through and changing those to LEDs. There was a need for some extra classrooms in both middle schools, so we built the wall. We had some electrical work to do in those rooms, got those done this summer. And again, just a busy summer for the maintenance department. As far as our staff, I cannot say enough about the custodial staff at the high school. As you can imagine, there's just a lot to be done up there, and it was all done around a major project with, on average, about a hundred construction workers on site every day. And they still got us open on time. All the floors were waxed, all the windows were cleaned, all the desks were cleaned, all that got done. But we did a lot of things just as the maintenance department and the custodial staff. We installed all the soap dispensers, all the toilet paper dispensers. We were up there, Joe Kennedy, our locksmith, all the hardware was installed, and all the construction cores come out and all of our cores go in, so it's completely on our Keen system right now. And that was probably about three weeks' worth of work for this summer. Every day, we're there doing something, helping out contractors, and obviously we're maintaining a clean and sanitary condition. At Anna Divine, we cleared all the materials out of the building. We used it for storage for several years, and because it was closed for several years, a few things had deteriorated. The hot water heater was leaking. We had to put a new hot water heater in, and we replaced probably a dozen faucets. There was a bunch of broken windows that were replaced. We provided a Keen system to secure the building because it's still on our alarm system, so there's quite a bit of work there. We helped with the cleaning, but OCS did most of the cleaning, and we're still in process there. We're still working with the OCS maintenance crew to finalize everything. They're now on our EMS system, so they can control their own heat and that type of thing, and we're working through that. Just in general, that top number always surprised me. Janine, by herself, one person, three machines, made over two million copies. The bulk of that is Common Core, so she's actually, she's kind of making textbooks is what she's doing. Most of her work is probably booklets between twenty and sixty pages. The athletic fields, just from the beginning of spring until the end of summer, there was a hundred and thirty-eight games on all our fields. We have two guys out there doing all the lining, lawn mowing, putting up fences. We do it. Small engine repair, a hundred and twenty-four pieces of equipment out there, lawn mowers, snow blowers, they're all ready to go. The snow equipment's ready to go. The vehicles, everybody's, everything's up and running well. We receive, there's a bunch, there's all sorts of teachers' orders and supplies that come in over the summer. And we have two guys in our shipping and receiving, and they handled over three hundred orders this year, deliveries to the school. Everything was delivered on time, and some are clean. Again, there's just some numbers up there, things that we have in our school. And this is just a snapshot. There's some of the other things that go on that isn't on the list of here. Over the summer, we, through all of that, we also completed a hundred and twenty-four work orders, actually a little bit more than that in July, and then in August, there was an uptick. And a lot of the ones in August were moving furniture back and forth between schools, putting, going, making dump runs. A lot of it had to do, we ran three auctions this summer, between the spring and two this summer, and I have another one going out to get rid of surplus equipment, so there's some work involved with that. The work orders also represent cleaning the boilers and those types of things. And this is the group. We have a staff training day where they do write-to-know and other required trainings, and we have a lunch for them out at Bailey, and it said, "Look excited." And this is our, this is the group of mostly clean and stuff. By school, these are the dedicated guys that make those buildings look beautiful every year. And I separated the high school guys out. That young gentleman in the middle, Ronnie Rutledge, will be here. He started forty years ago tomorrow. He has forty years to live.
That's why he doesn't wear a uniform.
That's right. Well, he's kind of like you. He said, "I'm cold." This is the maintenance crew out at the warehouse. Again, dedicated bunch of folks. Really blessed. And when I first came here, I sat and I thought about what we really needed to do, and one of the first things I did, I wrote a mission statement. And it's kind of wordy, and I've been kind of filtering it down, and I came out with this focus statement that went out to all the guys today. And this is what we did. This is what we're going to focus on. This is what we do every day to make sure that the kids have a good experience in their schools. And we're going to build off of this, and our guys are all dedicated to that, to this process.
Like the all of the buildings, all the time.
All the buildings, all the time. Exactly, exactly. I don't know what happened to the print. It looks like, I'm not the best actor in the world, but I'm better than that. Exactly. And so, this, I have some slides of the Second Century Project. I don't know if anybody has gone by there. This is in Salston, and this is the pit for the new elevator on the south end. Those folks are about six foot two each, and they are chopping away at rock. They have to go about another two feet. And probably by the end of this week, they'll be down there. That's the, that's the locker rooms at MJM. And today, all of the gym, this whole entire gym wall has been exposed, and the one on the school side, and that started happening this afternoon, and I was there about three o'clock, and everybody in the west wing was like this out the windows because you could actually see through the building. And all that's left now, probably by now, there was a few pieces of steel, and I'm sure they got them to the ground for safety by the end of the day, but I wasn't there. This is the cafeteria area. They're running all the wires and getting things done up in the ceiling there. All the ductwork's done, all the plumbing's done. Most of the electric is done. They're just running out of wits for lights and everything, is what these two guys are doing. This is the other half and the other angle. All the ceiling grid is already up. The soffit's done, sheet rock's done in that area, and we're on schedule, about a week ahead of schedule on the cafeteria. This little thing is the vent for the cooking hood, and it has to be certified that all the welds are good and that it holds air. And we're about five or six feet from the roof, and it's all been certified to that point. And so again, probably by Friday, that'll be a hundred percent complete. That is the bridge between MJM and Salston. And we disconnected the building so that we could, so we can tear the rest of it down. They left a little bit of steel on the MJM side just for support of that wall, so we don't have any issues. And they closed up this. This was Monday of this week. And that's the new gym floor come up on the bleachers. Still some work going on over at the fieldhouse. The gym floor is just spectacular. I can't tell you how nicely that came out. They're redoing the windows on the outside, they're re-pointing brick. These same things, guys on the inside, putting new grout between the windows. On the Andrew site, this is the street side, all the walls have been painted under the brick on the pool area and adjacent walls. The new lockers were installed in the locker rooms at the pool house. And that's pretty much it there.
Any questions, George? I just have a question. I'm paving at Bailey and Edson. There aren't any speed bumps anymore?
Right. So what we had decided, our civil engineer, the Nieran Marios, decided that the speed bumps weren't as effective, and they were actually a hazard. In general, I think speed bumps, and I'm not an expert in civil engineering, but in general, they're less effective than signage and paint. And so we took them out, we were going to paint some things, and then after the first week of school, we had some issue with people going through there kind of fast. I talked to the SRO. They've issued some warnings to people, and I don't know if they, if the warnings didn't work, they were going to issue some tickets. That is our road. It's not owned by the town, and so we do have control of it. We have signage up, and we're trying to determine whether or not we need to put the speed bumps back in. And the other thing is, is that the other speed bump, the speed bumps we were having were really narrow, so they, when the plow hits them, it knocks them out of the way. So new speed bumps are like six feet wide, and we're trying to decide how we're going to handle that.
I think if you see the speed bumps over on Joyce, those are the new type of speed right. Those are the speed bumps.
Yeah, especially you don't know they're there.
Yeah. If you don't know what those little white arrows mean, if it was coming.
There were white arrows.
Okay, next on the superintendent's report, we have, although it seems very early, we always start off in October, sometimes early November, with just a very quick budget primer from Mr. Olson and Mrs. Woodard.
So, a year ago, we did this, and maybe for the first time on our call, but Beth and I have been working on this, and we'll run through about fifteen slides, and hopefully they will elucidate something for you. So, the goals for this next year's budget, it seems in a way early for us to be talking about budget because the auditors, as you know, haven't even come in and seen us yet to close out last year's financials, but of course, we can't wait for them. So, these are some pretty general goals that would probably apply to just about any school district's budget process, to support district goals, student achievement, engage the community, equitable people allocations, et cetera, obviously keep within the tax levy limit. And the bottom one is important too, and actually, we've had some success with that recently in seeking alternative funding opportunities and grants. I think, I think we maybe were just made aware of a grant today that we got from Miss Gifford, something along. So anyway, these, you know, she's not the only one who's out there looking for such things. I think, I think we've gotten several, so that's a pretty good, pretty good thing.
And those additional opportunities help us with new initiatives like My Brother's Keeper and other grant initiatives while not impacting the rest of the general fund budget or even help use those funds towards other operational.
So, through, this is, again, looking at the year that we're in right now, the budget vote, we had almost sixty-five percent approval on the budget. The budget is almost a hundred and seventy million dollars, amazingly. The revenues to support the budget, which are essentially revenues outside of the tax levy, are sixty-six million dollars. You'll recall that we decided to bump the fund balance appropriation up to two million dollars this year. We had originally, I think we had a million dollars last year. We're anticipating one point seven this year, and then we went up to two million at the end so that we could reduce the tax levy. This has a, that's a, yeah, no, no. Oh, that, that, to one point oh six percent this year, which is below what would have normally been considered a pretty low levy limit of one point three five percent. So, you know, we're, you know, you guys decided to make that gesture toward taxpayers to maintain the levy as best as we could. And then, go ahead.
Oh, I just want to point out about the state increase. Most of the increase of the revenues to support the budget, the nine point eight two percent increase, a majority of that, about sixty, sixty-two million dollars was our budgeted state aid. The remainder of other revenues are smaller things such as interest, tuition for other districts, other charges, and things like that. But the state aid increase of nine point nine percent made up a good portion of that nine point eight two percent increase in other revenues. And one of the reasons that the state aid increase was so high is we are anticipating that we're going to be able to submit an early aid start on December 1st for the Second Century Project for the main portion of the high school, and that aid will start generating in the second portion of this year. So we've included that in our state aid revenues, anticipated state aid revenues for the current year. That's one of the reasons that the state aid went up high because the actual foundation aid increase was only about nine hundred thousand dollars, of which, if you recall, a portion of that we had to allocate or set aside for community schools aid initiatives.
So this is, this is a bit of a look at some of the things that have gone with respect to school taxes in the last couple of years. This board decided to go forward with a veteran's exemption a few years ago, and you can see that the number of veterans exemptions actually in this district has fallen over the last two years by a hundred and twenty-one, which is more than five percent of the total of two years ago. So whether, you know, I suppose we can imagine that maybe World War II veterans are dying and such, and they're not being replaced by more recent veterans, but I thought that's kind of an interesting, interesting to look at. And then the senior citizens tax exemption, which we changed. You want to talk about that, Beth?
Sure. The senior citizen exemption historically had been, we had only offered one exemption, which was fifty percent off the assessment for sixty-five and older under, under income limit of twenty thousand dollars, and the board decided, start beginning in sixteen, seventeen, to expand that, so we now have a sliding scale like many municipalities and other school districts do. So that income level has increased from twenty thousand up to twenty-six, seven, or around there, and they're incrementally, incremental percentages of assessment that can come off for that. And although these exemptions aren't a really result in a shift of that tax burden to the rest of the taxpayers, these people are very appreciative, and these people need these exemptions, and they come to the tax window, and they are very appreciative that they've been given this relief.
Beth knows these people. Because that, is that the tax window, as many of you probably know, who come and take your taxes here.
And another portion of the school tax relief that we wanted to just briefly touch on was STAR and the property tax relief credit. This has kind of changed over the past five years. There've been different programs. STAR has changed property tax credit, which was, had a different name the last three years. STAR, traditionally, we've known STAR since STAR began as a reduction in your tax bill. So those of us who have a basic or enhanced STAR have that amount of money taken off for our primary residents if we're qualified off of our tax bill, and our tax bill is six hundred or thirteen hundred dollars less. People who purchased homes or applied for STAR after May of 2015 do not get that benefit on their school tax bill. If they're eligible and they have applied through the State Department of Taxation and Finance, they will get a check from the state directly. So people, when they're preparing their tax bills, you know, one person is getting it, one person isn't. Neighbors could have differences in tax bills that are a thousand or thirteen hundred dollars difference. So it's caused a little confusion, and with new homeowners who are comparing to former homeowners, there's been some confusion about that, but the state has made that change. I don't know where it's going. And the other, in the past few years, we've also had, if the district, school districts maintain tax-free compliance, if we stay at or below the tax cap, our STAR-eligible taxpayers have benefited from an additional rebate check, which initially was the amount, the difference between your tax from prior year, so there really was no increase in your tax bill. Then it was that plus the prior year plus the municipalities, and it's kind of changed the last few years. So the new, the new property tax relief credit, last year, I think it was a hundred and eighty-five dollars if you were STAR eligible. This year, there's a new three-year program, and this is a percentage, the check that residents, eligible residents will receive is a percentage of your basic STAR. And for seventeen, eighteen, it goes by income, so everyone's going to get a different rebate check. If your income falls below two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, you're eligible if you're STAR eligible. And this chart kind of shows the income level and what your percentage of STAR you'll get back in the check. Now, every town is different, so we just have to put an average here. So the basic STAR, the average check would be thirty-seven dollars for the lowest, for the highest income level, and then a hundred and eighty-seven for the lowest income level. And for the enhanced, it's a flat. If you're eligible for enhanced, you're already meeting an income limit, so it will be twelve percent this year, and the... percent this year, and the average from all the towns is a hundred and sixty-four. Because each town has a different STAR amount, that check will vary between towns, too. I went on the website for the state the other day, and it enables you to determine when checks will be mailed, and allows you to go in by county, and then school district, and then town, and supposedly, in our school district, I checked the city and the county so, because checks have started being mailed on September eighteenth. Although, we've probably seen how many taxpayers in the last two weeks, and no one has mentioned getting one yet, but they should be forthcoming from the state.
It's great to have a knowledgeable taxpayer like this.
And those are going to be increasing over the next two years as well, so we'll see where that goes up.
So, here's some history, the next two slides actually have some history. This is simply a history of the budget, and the budget has gone up fairly markedly over the last six years. You can see this line from probably a hundred and forty-two million or so up to this year's a hundred and sixty-nine million. These are the revenue sources. The tax levy has gone up at a lower rate, I would say, than the budget itself, and then obviously, the revenue, which is mostly state aid, has filled in the gap. So, that's one chart. Another chart...
But I just want to mention that. The reason that we picked these six years, it's shown on the next chart, because these are the six years, this is when the tax cap started, so the next chart will show that.
So, these are the six years, again, of the levy limit and our actual levy. You can see, our levy, the levy that you guys have decided on, is in olive, I would call it, perhaps olive, and the actual amount that, the other, oh, cheo, that's what we'll call the other. Great. So, you can see that in every year except one, the levy that you guys have decided on has been lower than the actual levy limit, which I think is great. In one year, it was tied, which is that one. Otherwise, it's been lower, and here's the one point oh six versus the one point three five in most recent year.
One other thing that I think is important to note here is if you look at the chart, there's no consistency there. So, you know, in thirteen fourteen, our cap was four percent, and this year, it was one point three five. So, we don't know what next year will bring yet, but...
As you recall, I think Dr. Paleno said it before, you know, there's that X-step calculation that you go through to determine what the levy limit will be, and as Beth said, it's different every year, obviously. So, we wouldn't be talking about the budget without mentioning fund balance issues. There's the four percent, the famous four percent that we tried to keep in place. The amount that we've allocated to the budget, to the budget as a revenue, which is two million dollars this year. And then we have fund balances in various legal reserves, and you can see six that are named there. Those are the reserves that we use, and the amounts in them vary. The amounts in them vary because of need. The tax reserve has an amount that's calculated based on what people are asking for out there in the world through legal means, and then the other ones have various amounts that you're quite well aware of, such as the capital reserve that we voted on, and then we are planning on using some of that in the HARA, as you know.
Sure. One of the reasons that we talk about reserves and that we bring reserve funds up at this time in the budgeting process is because we will use them for a variety of reasons. One being, they're targeted, specific reserves is targeted towards specific liabilities. For example, the tax retroary reserve, we have pending tax retroary proceedings against the district, and by saving, you know, reserve funds that have been left over from prior years, we can hold them aside so that if we have any major settlements or any settlements, we don't have to go back and add that to the budget. We'll have that in savings, we can use that to settle those liabilities. Also, they reduce future tax levy increases by appropriating towards the budget, so any of those, so unappropriated fund balance at the end of the year can be used to offset the tax levy for the next year. And even reserves that we aren't going to use can be used in the future. So, if we have money left over in the reserve and determine that our liability is no longer at that level, we can use that money and bring it back to the general fund to offset the tax levy or reduce the tax levy. We also use reserves used to avoid large tax swings, and the fiscal stress calculations that the state comptroller's office use like to see that you have reserves, plans for the future, ways to cut your future liabilities. And also, another important factor to remember is that when the financial people are looking for bond ratings, and when we're going to finance capital projects, they like to see that you have fiscal stability and that you have reserves. And since we will most likely be going out for a very large bond issue in the near future, that's very important, that we have that fiscal stability and reserves.
And the fact that we are in a pretty fiscally stable environment here has shown itself through the interest rates that we've been able to get in recent years for some of the bands that we've issued, so...
I was just looking at them before we came in, and I think either the first or second was less than half a percent, and the most recent borrowing we did for the capital, the Second Century Project was eighty-six or eighty-five million dollars. The effective interest rate was one point eight.
So, they've kept us in pretty good stead.
These are two of the reserves, and we just wanted to discuss a little bit about the uses of them. We have the balances in these reserves are a little higher. We have the capital reserve fund was approved by voters on five nineteen fifteen. We funded it to the ten million dollar maximum, and we use that, we're using that capital reserve to fund the Maha renovation project, so those monies are already available, we don't have to increase the tax levy for that renovation project. Also, we have a balance remaining of five point seven million dollars in the capital reserve after the Maha renovation allocation, so that can be used in conjunction with building aid to fund future capital projects to a larger degree.
And for those of you who are mathematicians in the audience, you might notice that those two numbers add up to ten million, nineteen thousand dollars or so, that's because there's been interest on those monies that we're able to keep in the fund.
Also, we recently talked about the tax retroary reserve fund. We, on a regular basis, every year, we receive, just about in July, petitions from mostly commercial properties seeking to have their assessment reduced. We keep, we calculate the liability associated with that, and we're able to have a reserve fund to offset that liability should they settle. In the past year, and into this year, we anticipate funding settlements of three point one million dollars just for two petitioners alone that we know of. So, those funds are there for a reason, and we're using them for those reasons. And should there be, most of the reserves have specific legal requirements attached to them as far as funding them, as far as establishing them, as far as using them, whether voter approval is required or board approval is required, and what you do to disperse those funds once they're used. In the case of tax retroaries, or after four years, those monies have to be returned if they're not used. So, should the liabilities associated with some of these large petitions be reduced for the future, and there's money left over, those monies can be used to be brought back to reduce future tax levies.
So, the budget development obviously starts here in some fashion, but in addition, we have to go through these various steps by looking at programs, staffing levels, transportation, facilities, boces programs, and what's called fixed costs here, which are, of course, salaries, benefits, and that sort of thing. And then, we're obviously going to get input from you guys, from people out in the schools, from administrators, as we move forward, and then we'll have, as we have had before, we'll have public sessions as well to solicit input from the public and to tell them how we're doing in the process as we go along.
And we're really, really, this is kind of early, but really, for the budget development process, kind of a continual year-round process. As we notice things, or as we, people identify things, you know, we're always making notes for the next budget year and things like that, but typically, by November, we'll probably have a budget calendar, we'll start the budget template. I've already started that, we're putting in, you know, this year's actual amounts and looking at next year. We'll be looking at, you know, for the next six months, we'll be tweaking that, we'll be adding any known expenses. As contractual obligations are known, they'll be added to the budget, we'll be reviewing them and tweaking those numbers. Hopefully, by mid-January, late-January, we'll have some idea of the state's proposal on state aid, and better ideas of TRS rates and health insurance costs and things like that. So, it's kind of a continual process, it's going to go on for the next six months until we get to the, you know, April board meeting where we hopefully have a budget that we can adopt.
And there are only four slides left. This is one of them, and again, we used a similar slide last year. This is just showing, you know, for the hundred and sixty-nine million, where the sort of the four main sources of revenue are. And you can see, sixty percent is the levy, almost thirty-seven percent is state aid, which leaves a mere three percent to everything else. The major budget components, again, something similar to what we did last year. You can see labor costs are, it won't surprise you that they're seventy-five percent of the budget, labor costs meaning labor, salaries and benefits. And then the other categories, the left, the largest being boces services of those, and then debt service, transportation, et cetera. Of the human resources cost, which is that seventy-five percent chunk, this is that. So, of the seventy-five percent, which is about a hundred and twenty-seven million dollars by my reckoning, sixty percent of that is salaries, and then you can see the spread of the others through retirement, which is the TRS and DRS system, social security, other benefits, and then health insurance, which is sizable, of course. I've said before that we spend one out of every five dollars on health insurance, and that's still the case. In fact, if you take seventy-five percent of this twenty-eight percent, it would be twenty-one percent. So, about twenty-one percent of our budget goes just toward health insurance, which is pretty amazing. And finally, I'll do this one.
So, at this early stage, we're just starting to think about the twenty eighteen, nineteen budget, and what are some of the things that are going to impact our, where we're going with that. One is going to be building aid for Second Century Project. As we get closer to submitting that early aid request, we'll get a better feel for that. We're going to be meeting with our financial advisors to develop a funding scenario and our debt service plan for funding the Second Century Project as well as any other smaller projects. We also are concerned about community schools set aside. That was a sort of, acted as almost a deduction from our increase in foundation aid last year. We had to set that money aside, it couldn't be used for anything within the general fund budget. We don't know what's going to happen with the formulas at the state aid still, so we're still waiting to hear about state aid, and we'll hopefully have some better insight into that by later in the budget season. As always, the tax levy limit, maximum allowable tax levy, also going to determine how much, you know, we're going to, to some degree, guide our budget. And for the current year, we just put in some numbers there, for the current year, the tax-based growth factor from last year was only point one two percent. And the allowable growth factor, and these are part of the calculation for determining the maximum allowable tax levy, the lesser CPI or two percent prior year was one point two six percent. There has been some hints that the CPI may be a little higher this year, so we'll see where that goes. That's only one factor in the calculation. Capital exclusion, that's a big part of the calculation, that's your capital tax levy from the prior year, it calculates in as well as your capital tax levy for the current year, and the capital tax levy simply is what you have debt service on for capital projects, less your building aid for those projects. So, that would be the capital tax levy, that would be part of the budget. Also, in the calculation are pilots, pilots from prior years, and current year, we have a couple pilots that went off this year, and we actually have a new one on. We have a new disclosure in our financial statement that our auditors enlightened us about today, which has you, it's just a footnote, that has you list the calculation of the loss of tax due to pilots, and then the amount of pilot money you're receiving. So, that's kind of an interesting, I was just calculating that, it's kind of an interesting number. And then also, the projected maximum level levy growth, tax levy growth, and that's the tax cap calculation that we're talking about. The final number for the current year was one point three five, and we actually levied one point oh six. Other things that might impact our eighteen nineteen budget that are unknown at this time are retirement system rate trends. We've been fortunate the last couple of years that the retirement system rates have been going down a little bit, and that's helped offset some of our other costs within the budget. Labor contracts are always a consideration, and our debt service planning, as we discussed going forward for the Second Century and other projects that we might be pursuing in the future.
Thanks for your attention. Any questions? At this time?
So, the numbers of the pilot, that actually is pretty interesting. So, that will be in the audit? We'll get to see those?
Yeah, it's just like two little numbers that the model like gives fifty-six. So, you have to read page fifteen, one through fifty-five before you...
I will.
Pilots, of course, are another one of those things that can fit into the category of tax ships. The pilot recipient doesn't pay, someone else will.
Well, I just happened to have the first public, the first community suggestion today from a taxpayer who, an elderly gentleman who felt that he needs to get some of his tax dollars, didn't want to come to board meeting, but suggested that we offer some educational classes for, for paying for us.
Thank you very much. Can the updated graphs be put on the website?
This will be on the website.
All four of the graphs were... I'm watching it, I'm just saying, it was not the same ones that you showed yourself. There are people that are looking at it at home, and I was just wondering if these four graphs are on the website?
That presentation is not on the website.
I'm telling you, there's four graphs, they changed, modified the graphs.
So, just double-check.
Well, it's on the board, Doc. It's on the board.
Thank you. Special thanks to Mrs. Jordan.
Not one top.
Thank you, Ms. Olson, and Mrs. Woodard.
As you can probably guess from our district happening, I'm recording, and it seems a little early to be reporting goals also, but by October first, one of the goals to report back to the board for, for seventeen nineteen, is the ENL, what we're doing now and what we're planning into the future. The goal on the ENL was, the superintendent will provide the board with a report on the district's current and future plans to address the needs of our fastest-growing subgroup, which are English-language learners. Just to give you an idea of the growth in our students, in our English-language learners, we have the last three years, and you can see, and obviously, look, we have more schools than this, but Chambers and First Washington have a large population of our English, the our ENL students, and Edson is what we call our magnet school for ENL, so we can put all of our resources, you know, in one place, and much of our, you know, consolidate our resources and serve these students. You can also see we have Miller... You can also see we have Miller and Bailey. I'll talk a little bit about this before, but you see here, Miller is 0017s. I'll talk about, I'll talk a little bit more about that later on in the presentation. This was, we were not offering ENL services in Miller prior to this year, but Dr. Fell Sel and her team have really come together to put, to a much more comprehensive program of our ENL students, seeing this, seeing this growth and, and really looking at new and different ideas to make sure we're serving these students. So again, want to tell you about the two, the increase out of, the two things you're seeing here. First thing you're seeing is our students who are, who are ENL students. With the star, the star is here coming across, those are our students that are called commanding students. And you see our PRI gave a little definition. A student at the commanding level is designated a former ELL student, but they're still entitled to services for, you know, continued services for two years. So while they may not be labeled ELL, they are still entitled to services, so we are still serving them. So again, so just look at Chambers. This year, we have one, you know, commanding student there of our 67. Look back here, there would have been eight commanding students in that number. Clearly, a large increase in the number of students we have both, just in general, with our ENL students for the last three years. This is a great slide. I don't expect you to read it all, it is in your packet. But what I really like about the slide more than the content is this shows our intent. We now have an actual process for registering our ELL students and making sure, identifying ELL students, what their needs are, and doing, with a couple of things that are, that are new. This 1A, looking at our ELL students who might be IDP or 504. So if we have ELL students who, who are, who might be an IDP, here, this, this addresses that situation. Looking at our students with inconsistent or interrupted formal education from their age to this point, I would call that SICE students. So that's, those are students who come to us who have had inconsistent or interrupted education. Having a process for registering those students and identifying them when they come to building. Just having this, having this, this flow chart and people who know their jobs and know what we do when, when our ENL students come in is a big change for us, and it's, and it's a huge jump forward. Our new, our new ELL language staffing. Okay. We talked about the middles, and it's one of the things that, that I think really is going to make a difference for what we're doing with our secondary students, is that improvement in Miller, or, offering Miller, and I'll tell you why in a second. Our bilingual family workers, that picture is not a stock picture. We, we, that's ours, so we definitely try to come off the internet. So those are our students. That's such a great picture. And proof is that the, the, just Chambers. That is such a great picture it looks like. We made it up. New 17-18 school year, as I've been talking about, ENL programs expanded to Miller Middle School to allow students to remain in their home school. What could we do before? ENL students at the middle school level, we move them to Bailey. So what happens? Students say, students and parents, students go, their parents say, "I don't want to go to Bailey. I want to stay here in Miller." So they decline services. So now we're not reaching these students because they don't want to move, move schools. So we're able to open the services at Miller Middle School, make sure we get, you know, get all these students and that they are receiving what they need so they can move forward with our education. So this is, one teacher, one move, very simple, big results. So we think this is going to make a big difference for us. We have a lot of partnerships around this. You all know, this is exploding, and it's not just in Kingston, but it's all over. The, the, the idea of, of the fact that we have a lot of ENL students moving into district schools, district schools all over the state, it's exploding. We've been really lucky to have a lot of support from, from community partners. I always want to call this Auburn, but it's not. It's Arburn, which is, that's about a digital bilingual education resource network. These people are doing a great job. They come to us, they're free. They've been, they've spent a lot of time with Dr. Fell Sel and her team going through. They helped us create that chart that we, I showed you earlier as far as getting our, our students enrolled. They're doing a lot of training, and I won't leave it off too, but just the specific trainings they've been doing with our teachers and our support staff this year. We actually have them coming in again later on in the month to follow up on a lot of this training, so it's just a, a really good partnership and a great help. That's about Special Education Parents Center. This is really for, for our adults, obviously. We can try to reach out to the, the ELL families are as important as the students in making sure that we have that connection with them. Ben, Ben Cosme, Ms. Ben Cosme has been working with us, and she's, she'll be in here actually next week, providing training for parents, English, Spanish, helping them understand and getting access to information and getting them, helping them navigate through the educational process for their students. Big help, and I think, again, we want to make sure we have this relationship with parents. Also, let's see, this is, this has been going on for a long time, this, this partnership. Again, working with the adults, we've expanded this this year, usually just at George Washington, now at Kingston High School and at Chambers Elementary School as well. In the classroom, what are we doing for our, so just bringing them in and having a subject program, what are we doing through the classroom, what are we changing, what we're doing? This year, we've adopted four new, four new curricula to work with our students, anchor comprehensive workshop for kindergarten through sixth grade, Inside the USA, fifth grade through 12th grade, Edge Fundamentalist is in ninth through 12th grade, and then the Do the Math is a ninth through 12th grade math program. So again, you know, we have students that are coming from different cultures, we have students that have English as a new language. We need to change some of the things we're doing in the classroom, and that's happening this year. I can, I can talk about this, but this is the video. This is what's going on at Chambers. Dr. Fell Sel, her team, Kate Petrie, the principal of Chambers, came up with this idea. Chambers is, Chambers is, not only has, right now, has our highest number of ENL students, they are our most diverse school as far as ENL students. Most of them are Spanish-speaking, but we have, we have kind of a, you know, a global imprint over there at Chambers, but the number of colleges is being spoken in the buildings. But this multi-age group, just to tell you what it is, even though you saw the video, we have really split kindergarten and first grade, ENL and non-ENL students all in the same classrooms. The one thing that you didn't see through the video, we have a regular teacher, a teacher assistant, and an ENL teacher. So the ENL teacher splits between these two classes, the teacher's assistant, and the, and the teacher staying in these classes. And you heard on this, teachers are T-SOL, so we have multi-certified teacher, and then we have bilingual actual teacher assistants in there, as you saw in the, in the video. So a lot of support for our, for our ENL students in that area, and we're, we're continuing to monitor this to see how the progress is, but I'll tell you, if you go in there, there's a lot going on, and it looks great. In progress, some things we're doing, this, this shouldn't say in progress, William, this is, this just happened today. This whole thing is actually the name of the program. It's cultivating district leadership to build systems for English language learners, multi-language learners, success to design newcomer SICE program, and to develop repatriated, not that they call this work, I don't know why, and of course, that comes from state aid. So it's no surprise. But we are very happy to, to have been accepted into this program, and we're starting, in two weeks, we'll be sending a team.
Next week.
Next week, we'll be sending a team up to Albany to start this training, and again, I think it's a big part of us and moving forward in this and getting, getting Kingston to be ahead of the game and, and moving forward for our kids. Training our staff to utilize multi-language score to identify our SICE students, that goes back to this slide. This is what we're using here, training them for, so they can use that, that multi-language score so we know who our students are, what they need. And training to examine differences between language acquisition versus learning disabilities. Many of you have yourself encountered, we are learning deficits versus a learning disability. This is really, is a language deficit creating us think, masking itself as a learning disability, or does a student really have a learning disability? That's what this process is going to help us with, we're training it, we've got it boot, we got it built into our registration, and I think it's going to make a big difference. Other things that are in progress, established protocols for, for our LPT and CSE meetings. Again, those are our language proficiency and our, and teams and our, and our CSE teams continue to look at that. Is, you know, is it a deficit or is it a disability? Streamlined our registration process, I showed you that. Increased our bilingual T-SOL certified staff, this is one of the things we were really happy this summer, when we were interviewing people, how many people came to the table and said, "I have my T-SOL," or "I'm working on my T-SOL." We're working with student new pilots to offer reimburse, tuition reimbursement on student of T-SOL to, to really encourage our parents, to our parent teachers to go out and get that second language certification as well. Chief Information Officer, we're working with Gary Konzic to identify feature for SICE students into schools along with additional information for L. So we want to be able to identify in a, for our teaching when they go into e-school, okay, this is a SICE student. So that's what we're working, getting that done. And that's. Any questions?
Well, first of all, I'd like to compliment the team, because I remember when you first started thinking about this, it seems like it was last year, and you're so far ahead already. So it just is really nice to see the idea come to fruition, classes in place, and it's wonderful. During this, I just, I know it's not exactly the same thing, but it just makes me wonder if we can investigate the, whether or not it is useful to introduce language to our English-speaking students at an earlier age, because I would love to see that happen as well.
Yeah, and we, and I think we talked about this in our last meeting, talking about the difference between looking at the, an ESL or a bilingual, you know, program. And I think that's our next, that, that's really something we're, right now, we're looking at our, you know, making sure we're servicing these students that are coming in, but I think that's, that's like an advanced program, and, but that's something we're definitely talking about. And, and I do have to agree with you, I think Dr. Fell Sel has worked tirelessly to put this together and really get into our schools and help to get these programs going so we're serving our students, and she deserves a lot of, of the credit for her organization and management of this.
And I'm really happy to see that the Miller kids are getting served in their program.
Very simple fix, and, and, you know, it seemed like we made it so difficult for something that we think is going to have huge results.
I just think this is impressive. I mean, it's a complicated population, and, and there's, changes are happening so quickly, and especially when you're dealing with SICE students, there's so much to address. And I'm, I just think this is really impressive, and I'm impressed with the way the team has built a way to respond to this and then to continue to grow, because I'm sure this will continue. This is not it. So I'm really impressed with this, and I appreciate all the efforts.
And I think, well, you know, we're not the only ones facing this, and having, and having partners, and we're going out and seeking out those partnerships to help them, so we don't have to reinvent the wheel all the time, but you know, and make sure we're getting all those areas, meaning the parents, the students, the SICE students, the students who are ELL and maybe IDP or 504. It's a, it's a, and we're talking about, you know, a fraction of our population, but there's a lot, a lot of things they need to get through.
I think in the same vein, I'm just thinking about, you know, over the years, the, the increase in the number of acronyms, you know, as in SICE, is a, you know, is, is something that I've heard just in the last maybe year or 18 months, and it's just, you know, and we've talked all along about the need for, or the goal of differentiated instruction. And when all of these new acronyms come online that you have to keep track of, the reason is, is that because we're implementing differentiated instruction for tailoring our programs for the needs of, of more discrete, granular student populations.
I think that's a good word, too, granular, actually. I mean, it was getting down to, it was just, SICE students have been around, anyone who's been in, you know, in school, we've been receiving SICE students, especially in, you know, in city districts for a long time. We finally recognized, finally recognized, you know, drilled down that deeply, you know, they, they got to that granular level where it was, oh, maybe they have different needs than other students, which we knew in the classroom, but I think it's, you know, it's really becoming more a system of practice.
Just, oh, Peter, I can live on what Dr. Jacobson said, but I'm really heartened to see the number of partners that are available and the outreach that your team has done to partner with them, because we keep talking about shared services and how important that is in these economic times, and also the fact that those partners do exist to help us in that mission, so I'm really pleased to see that.
And again, I give Dr. Fell Sel a lot of credit for, for getting out there and finding these partnerships, and still, when Arburn came in, I didn't know where they were or why they were here. And I think a lot of people don't know about them either, but we rarely get to access them. And they're free. I do want to also mention, I mean, we use a lot of title funds for some of these, some of these positions that are, have free funds. We're also using, we, we talked about, Mr. Ralston talked about accessing grants, and we also using grant money not only for one of our bilingual family workers that the board created last, last month and we're, we're actually appointing today. So we use, we use grant funds for that, for our community engagement grant, but we're also using it to do some parent outreach with, with that, that grant fund. So it's, we're, we're making use of a lot of different resources.
Anything else?
You're moving along, we're going to the consent agenda. Are there any resolutions that any trustees would like a full-term consent agenda?
We believe there is a full-term consent agenda. Do you establish a child safety zone?
It's on the consent agenda. No, it's on the consent, we know we have 38 and 39 of the consent agenda.
Any others?
Okay, on to your motion, here's the consent agenda minus BOE 39. All those who favor the consent agenda minus BOE 39, please see if I have a saying. Opposed? Abstained? BOE 39?
Sorry, before we go on to BOE 39, just wanted to say, we have two, two new employees who are here with us tonight who are on the, on the agenda. One, Rachel, one, Rachel Perversky.
Yeah.
Welcome.
Thank you, very excited to be here.
Okay, sorry, I wanted to interrupt for that, because I know she sat through most of this.
On BOE 39?
I just wanted to comment on BOE 39, we're establishing a child safety zone of Wilbur Avenue and West O'Riley for student safety purposes, and I want to congratulate the district for moving sufficiently and establishing that zone, and also thank the, the city. We have a letter of support, which was necessary for establishing the zone from, who was it from?
Wilbur, West O'Riley?
Diane, of course, was the safety officer for the city. So it was a, was brought to our attention about six weeks ago that there was a very potentially dangerous situation with safe route to school that wasn't part of the safe routes to school program, and so this child safety zone establishes, designates that route as a, as a safety area and allows us to provide transportation to, to impacted students.
Okay, any other thoughts or questions? I just want to thank the policy committee for taking on yet, and so they're, and doing so as quickly.
All right, all those who favor BOE 39, please see if I have a saying. Opposed?
I just have a couple of questions on.
On BOE 39?
No, not on that.
On some other ones?
On other, oh, is that a type of asking?
After we make this first decision. But you keep saying.
Okay. So the, the one I have a question on is how many students to the Langkins School? And why are we using that bus company? And are they coming from Kakesville?
Well, they're, they're coming from Kakesville. There's, it's a special education bus.
Okay.
I don't, I don't know how many students, I think it might just be.
So it's.
I don't know how many students, I think it might just be.
So it's two times a day then?
I believe so, there and back.
I didn't know if it stayed, but it seems a lot of them. And the other thing was the disposal of surplus equipment, for instance. I looked over and some are in good condition, so what happens to that?
Gets disposed of.
Like rollerblades, I mean, can you dominate this?
We can, after the board declares it surplus, we can then entertain anyone who would like to just have it.
Okay.
But the board has to declare it surplus first. We try to auction off everything that we can possibly auction off.
So nobody wanted that stuff?
Nobody rollerblading.
Rollerblades, scary, nineteen ninety five.
The band uniforms.
Well, again, we have the band uniforms, you have declared it surplus, we do have some people who are interested in possibly the band uniforms. But if you remember, if anyone remembers, those band uniforms are not new.
You mean high school band uniforms?
Yes. They're the old ones, before we talked in two years, we bought two years ago, new ones they were.
And they were like twenty years old.
And they were older than that, and they were stitched together by parents and by board band boosters for the last, for ten years prior.
So then, this has been my SOE, it's, I've talked about this several times, it's the Special Ed Annual Program issued most mandatory station. And we're now getting this from January fourth up until September twenty sixth, which I've always had a problem with. I mean, we can't vote against it because it should be already happening in the programs. But I spoke about this several times. So the committee on Special Ed recommendations, we're getting, committee determined that meeting is held on January fourth. There are a hundred percent meetings from January fourth till last week that they're just asking us. And I, it was coming up K for a while, but now it seems like.
Well, and also, one of the things that does happen, so that January fourth meeting, you may have approved that January fourth meeting back in February, but then they came forward beginning of school year with a new need and we had to adopt that, redo that.
And it was still set January fourth.
It was still set January fourth. Because it'd been a minute. But yes, I mean, and we, it comes, it seems like there's like a period of time where we're really, yeah. Good trip.
Thank you.
Okay, and it's good, we review the donations, please.
Sorry. We have D-ten established scholarship, whereas it is the desire of Patricia A. Smith to establish a memorial scholarship fund in memory of Ronald and Joan Brandt, who passed away last year, and wish to establish a scholarship fund for an underprivileged student whom otherwise would not be able to continue their education after high school. And whereas this scholarship in the amount of $10,000 is to establish the fund and to have an annual award of $500 for graduating senior, boy or girl, or whatever gender, at Kingston High School, who would have a GPA of seventy-five or greater and who would be attending an accredited college, trade school, or an online educational program. The scholarship recipient will be chosen by a scholarship committee. And we have D-eleven, accepted donation for EC Meyer Elementary School, whereas the City School District is a recipient of a generous donation from EC Meyer PTA in the amount of $740. And I think there's a whole other numbers.
Okay. Thank you. Which brings us to committee reports, and the Policy Committee's only report we have in the agenda.
Yes. The Policy Committee met on Friday, September twenty second, we're very busy, there's our first meeting coming out of the summer. And as Mr. Shaughnessy already spoke to the resolution, just to briefly say that the first order of business at our meeting was we did discuss a scorecard, because to establish that school safety zone, we had to have a certain order of points. You know, we did some in consultation with our legal staff and with the safety officer from the City of Kingston. So that was something that was a priority for us, and we did establish that safety zone for Wilbur Avenue and West O'Riley Street. And then we reviewed a number of policies that needed updating, either for to be in compliance with the law and/or MIZBA recommendations. Two of them are on here for tonight, which had to do with evaluation of staff, policy nine four two zero and nine four two zero point one, which Mr. Verge brought to us, just not really substantive changes, just in terms of following legal procedure. We also have, so those will be up for adoption this evening. We also have policy nine two one five, the non-aligned policy, which we had to update because of four new positions that had been added. And also on the agenda or for the Policy Committee minutes, which were quite brief but very detailed, I think, in this department. So I would like to move policy, can I do them all, nine two one five, the non-aligned policy, and nine four two zero, evaluation of staff, along with nine four two zero point one this evening.
Any discussion?
I say.
And our next meeting is this Friday, usually the first Friday of each month, nine thirty here at Seoni. I sent out the agenda with a few policies to review.
Moving to the, yeah. Any discussion? All right, all those in favors?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? All right. Which moves us to old business. Is there any old business, any trustee would like to raise at this time? Okay, very nothing. All move to new business. Any new business, any trustee would like to raise at this time? Mrs. Jordan.
It's kind of related to the safe zoning thing. I briefly mentioned this passing to Dr. Catalina. I wondered if there was any safe routes to school money anywhere available, because it seems to me that we have a lot of places where we don't have sufficient shoulders or sidewalks, especially in Hurley or near Crosby School, or, you know, there are just neighborhoods that don't have those, where the kids still walk. And I just think that if we could get money for signage where during those times when kids are approaching school or leaving school, where it could be like a fifteen mile per hour speed limit flashing, I think that that might be useful. Because when cars go, I mean, I'm an adult and I'm walking down Santa Grove, and when cars come there, it's frightening, because they're going the speed limit or more. And I just think if they were approaching me at fifteen miles an hour, I wouldn't feel like I had to jump into the ditch. And I just wondered if there's any money available anywhere to help us do that. We spoke about it, like at Hurley School on Schoolhouse Lane, where it's so narrow, about the potential of putting in a flashing light there. But I think, you know, within a mile of these schools where kids are walking, there should be a reduced speed when they're going to school, none at all.
We don't, we don't have the authority to reduce the speed limit, but the municipality, but the safe, as you know, the city has the safe schools, the safe routes to school money that they won, and clearly Mayor Norland's team are getting very good at winning grant awards. And I know they are looking, there is another, we're not eligible, the school district wouldn't be eligible for the safety, it's for cities and towns. But I know that, I know that's part of the City of Kingston, they are applying for that second round of that money, so that's a positive. And I do want to, and I do want to commend the city for recognizing the need and applying for that and working in conjunction with the school district to determine some of those areas. But, yeah, I think continuing to work, you know, since the beginning of this conversation, things I'm saying is we have, I mean, this is something we can't do all by ourselves, and we have to have cooperation from the municipalities about what the speed limits are and where are certain, where are crosswalks, what do they look like, those kind of things.
It just seems that we always wait for some tragedy first to happen, and we can't control everything, but there are places where these kids are walking and cars are zooming by them, and it is, it's scary.
Yeah.
There was an article in Executive Pines' bulletin announcement yesterday, there's an article in the Freedom today about new programs included in this budget. One of them, I think it was about a million dollars for putting solar-powered speed signs in school zones. I think it was that amount of money, but it was a significant amount of money, so that's something that.
Can we write him a letter of support?
Yeah.
We could do that from the advocacy committee.
Okay. I don't even recall unless, I don't know, unless waiting, but that at the Meyer School, there's even a school zone sign.
No, I don't think there is.
So is that something that is up to the municipality, they're not even a speed limit, just a speed limit, to designate something as a school?
Yeah, we don't do that. The town, the town or the city.
So we have schools in the town of Ulster, and we have schools in the town of Hurley, besides the City of Kingston, and about other towns.
We have ten municipalities.
We'd have to get them to petition.
I do think that that's important, it should be at least designated, even not going to set a speed limit, that it should be designated as a school zone, especially where Myers, you come down, they just put that stop sign a few years ago, you know, and it's right there.
That would be something we.
Cause the schools, if the state could encourage the executive to petition that.
Yeah, I think sure. On Ulster, on Hurley, such as cities.
Have the other town supervisors.
Okay.
Any other business?
Well, this is a comment that I have, the comments, board comment, about six weeks later, I meant to do it at the first meeting in September. The week, about ten days before Labor Day, I noticed throughout the city that the Public Works Department was very busy painting crosswalks, repainting crosswalks and lane markings on streets throughout the.
Still at it.
Throughout the, throughout the city in anticipation of school starting. And I would just like to thank the city for their efforts in that regard. That was, that's the first time I've really noticed a dedicated effort over an extended period of day to do that.
Any others? Old business, new business, announcements? Announcements? Board announcements?
Okay, it's a fucking conversation, Tuesday conversation.
Next to.
I'm. Protection says that is about a simple manual, it's not really a lot. Tuesday, October, September, manual, and for a lot, fucking conversation.
Tomorrow, five o'clock, ribbon cutting ceremony at high school.
In the field house, there's a ribbon cutting ceremony. And it's just prior to the Parents' Day, so. And there's students all signed up, took people in tours.
People left in tours, people, yep, students are signed up, and we have our own official Kingston City School District giant scissors.
Are they orange?
They are orange.
Do those get to keep them?
And they say Kingston City Schools. The portable baskets are not up to that, they won't be up till.
And homecoming is again, right? Homecoming, Friday, Friday, and Saturday. And Saturday, yes. Lots of things.
And the Hall of Fame dinner on Saturday.
Hall of Fame dinner, all the weekend.
Two parades on Friday, homecoming and meeting, sob, right?
Okay, any other? Very good, all in motion, to turn. There's anyone, there's anyone who would like to address the board at this, please come forward and speak directly into microphone. In two minutes, and Mr. Turner will let you know. Would anybody like to address the board?
I want to thank you for doing the safe walks to school, but I also would like to say that I think there, that it should be expanded, not just Wilbur Avenue, but I often give rides to students from Beet Stadium all the way down to Strand, Beet Stadium all the way down to Kennedy School, Beet Strand to Henry Street. And there are lots and lots of places where we have students walking in the dark, walking where there is no safe sidewalk. And honestly, we felt that we had a closed campus at high school during the day, and we have students walking at very dark times to inform our schools. So I hope you will continue on that committee, and I think it should be brought to each PTA of every elementary school and middle school, and it might be good for the district parent group. The other thing is, I really love the idea that we're going to be targeting 400 students of English language learners and their parents to try to get them more actively engaged and involved in these magnet schools. But I do believe that after we have all these wonderful open houses at all our elementary schools, middle schools, and tomorrow our high school, there still is only about 50% if we're lucky at schools of parents getting to attend. And I think the other 50% who do not attend, I think the teachers are getting very valuable information in the course of their open houses, not just their core subjects, but also their co-curricular activities. And I believe that that information should be packaged up for every team and group, and those parents who are not able to be in attendance, it should be sent home with them during the following week, so we can actively engage all parents of all of our students in our district, not just for those who are able to get to our events. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? I think having no need to the second executive session, and now I'm entertaining. All those in favor?